Call me in your order.
Madam Clark.
Good afternoon. Mr. Bailey.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present.
I'm here, Dr. Love.
That's why I say present. Follow his lead. Always best. Don't mess with the card, damn guy.
Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Here. Reverend McDowell. Say a word for us, sir.
As our heads. Oh, Lord, you brought us together on this beautiful sunny day. You've allowed us to move about. You've allowed us with strength and health. And for that, we are grateful. Bless us today as we get through the various items on the agenda. Touch us with your hands of sensitivity that we might sense and feel your nearness. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor, I will have a couple of moments of personal privilege today throughout the day. And I want to start with one because we are well into our intern season with our revamped and wonderful intern program here at the city. And so our first of hopefully many, I'll let Ms. Ashley Jenkins introduce Ms. Mia Long, a magna cum laude graduate of Howard University. And she is here as she prepares for hopefully going to law school. Mia Long.
Yeah. So Mia, we're super excited about you joining us. So you can come back here. I have a really quick bio for Mia. Mia, well, mayor and members of city council. And please introduce our intern this semester, Mia. A diploma native and recent graduate of Howard University. Working arts and creative science, graduate of magna cum laude in the Seminole Program for during her academic career. Ms. Jones, she was herself through participation in future law scholars program, the Black Freedom Free Law Society and the NAACP.
As well as Lorenzo Jones and leadership laws of community-based organizations. Dedicated to providing, um, community-based missions. She's a founder of the Ebony Foundation, a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing scholarships, mentorship and professional development opportunities for students. Strong commitment to public service, an interest in local government, make her an asset to collegiate academy internship program. And we are honored to have her as an intern hostess.
Well, thank you all for welcoming me. Um, I've met a lot of people yesterday and today's just a pleasure to meet everyone. And thank you for making me feel so welcome.
Thank you, Mia. We look forward.
All right, so where did you go to high school?
Yeah.
Well, we're awesome. I'm out of the whole Howard again. We play, we play y'all next week, football. Yeah.
It's okay. We're gonna let the score determine.
Maybe they'll look at the scoreboard. Love it.
Who is your dad?
Oh. My father is Lorenzo Jones. He works in forestry and beautification.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure already after, what, day, we're in day two.
Day two.
All right, so we will get started with our city council discussion. The first item is the solid waste division route balance plan. Mr. Robert Anderson, public works director, and Samantha Jaeger, solid waste superintendent. It's very important that we share this information with council and the public. Um, as there'll be a few changes with our routes. And everyone already knows that we do it the best. Robert and his team for years have done this so well. So it's gonna be smooth, but it's important to be transparent so everyone knows what to expect.
Absolutely. Thank you, mayor, council, city manager for having me here today. Again, as Ms. Wilson stated, I, we did present this back at the Health and Environmental Committee back in July, but through further discussions, we felt that a full council briefing was needed because of how impactful this change will be. So as always, we have to go through a history lesson to understand where we came from and where we're going to. So the last route balance that the solid waste division went through was back in 1991. So then we went from twice a week garbage collection to once a week collection. And then we added our curbside recycling program. Robert was the genius behind our four route areas. So unfortunately, Robert didn't have the talent to foresee the future and know where those boundaries should have been gone to predict the growth of the city. But here we are today. I know, he just did his best. So we've been able to accommodate that growth since 1991 through technology advancements with our trucks. We went from rear loading trucks to the side loaders, the one with the arms. And then those trucks have even advanced further between automation, uh, the three lever system. So the drivers would literally pull three levers to operate that arm. And now we have a joystick and we even have button controls to help improve the speed and speed of collection through our garbage trucks. We also have auto pack versus manual pack. I can bore you with all these trucks. However, these are very significant improvements on our, our vehicles to make sure that our collection is being timel, is timely and efficient. So here today, we're here to talk about balancing our density of services and improving our route efficiencies and optimizing, optimizing what we do every day. So the division has been maintaining a data graph since 1995. And we can see our growth has exponentially exploded on our Mondays and Fridays. Those are your yellow and red graph lines. So we've seen the most growth areas mainly out I-20 Wood Creek Farms area and then mainly out Garner's Ferry towards Hopkins, Lower Richland area.
What do we do on Wednesday?
So we do not run routes on Wednesday. We have a skeleton crew that does litter control, street sweeping, and among a few other things, and wash our trucks, yes. We have time to wash our trucks on Wednesdays with the routes being unbalanced. We don't quite have that time during our scheduled hours. So it's a great repair day for our fleet, fleet division that's not, you know, rush and go through the week. So this is also a good depiction of where our growth has been. So since 2000, you can see in the red is where we've grown. And there's kind of two, two annexation principles. So we either annex a plot of land and, you know, we add those services as those homes are built. Specifically, you know, kind of in the Wood Creek area, we were annexing a property, a single property after the home was built. And we were seeing stick-built, custom-built homes, so it was taking a little bit longer. And now we have these mass builders that have come in and people are moving in before the grass is growing. So with all of that, again, here we are with all of this growth, almost 13,000 customers since 1995. And the data that we have is from the 2024 assessor's data. So to balance our density, there's several factors that go into this, which includes safety, vehicle maintenance, employee morale, and unbudgeted overtime. So I know some people in this room have gotten a late night Friday text about, hey, we haven't serviced this subdivision yet. We're, and luckily through our, our Waste Wizard app, we were able to get in touch with a resident. And he let us, he kindly let us in to make sure that all of our services were complete on Friday. So that, that is most, most important.
Oh, great.
Yes. And we're headed into daylight savings. So working late on a Friday night in the complete dark towards daylight savings is definitely a safety issue and concern for our staff. We can also cut down on our unbudgeted overtime to make sure we can complete our routes within those 10 hours. Balancing these routes will also allow for future growth. We are continuing to annex and we continue to see new homes built. So we've rounded, we've designed these routes to allow for growth and to accommodate more homes each day. But right now, we're averaging about 400 homes per year that we're adding to our service. So with that, we have already funded our trucks. They are sitting in our parking lot waiting to be used. We have also funded our employees. Two of those employees will go on garbage and recycling. They are here and trained and ready. Two of those other positions, we're on our yard trash collection, which is already improving or proving to be more efficient. We have added a different style clamshell truck that works on our outer areas that don't have as much yard trash, but still need to be serviced. So industry standards are about 800 to 1,000 homes for a 10-hour shift. And right now, I know there's a lot of numbers right here, but we are over routed based on standards. So when we're over routed, we are not able to finish. We're taking more time to finish our routes. We finish our routes every day. However, it is taking longer and longer each day. So with that, we have drawn new lines. We still cannot see the future. So unfortunately, I have not developed that skill yet. Maybe Robert will teach me one day. But we will be changing 10, a little over 10,000 customers. So these 10,000 customers include about 6,500 for garbage changes. So they will change their garbage day and their recycling day. The other 4,000 customers will change their recycling week. So how do we tell everybody this? We have come up with a very direct communications plan, which has been approved by our P, Public Relations, Marketing and Media Department. Because we service almost 43,000 customers and we're only changing 10,000 customers. We want to keep this direct. We want to keep it direct to the citizens that are affected. Instead of getting 43,000 people excited, just keep those 10,000 in the know. So we've come up with a plan. So we have two letters and a magnet plus a postcard at the end. These letters are in your, your packet. We do have bigger versions if you look like them. The first letter will go out 45 days in advance. We are proposing these routes start on November 10th. So the first letter, letter we would be looking at sending next week. The second letter is a little more detailed. It shares your start date, your last service date of your old schedule, your, your first start date of your new schedule. And then it also includes your next recycling schedule. On the bottom here, we have our kitchen magnet will be, which will be included in the envelope with letter two. If you may notice, all of this is in a red color. Colors are very important to us. So Robert started out with four colors on his four route, or four route areas. We now have eight. So 10 years ago, when we did the recycling conversion, we came up with eight different color areas for the routes. This helps with driver education, supervision. This also most importantly helps our office staff. So when a resident calls in and says, hey, I got this red magnet. What does that mean? Office staff can immediately answer their questions, say, hey, you're, you're Monday first and third recycling and you're Monday garbage. Or whether it's blue or purple or yellow and green.
Does our little guy have a name?
He is the Waste Wizard.
You gotta have a name though. We gotta.
It's always been the Waste Wizard. We may have like a contest one day to, to name the wizard.
Looks a little bit like a combo of Jeff.
He was born, he, he was born in 1990.
Name on all three of them.
He's got a little age on him. He's, he still comes out once in a while. So the Waste Wizard is still around, one of, one of our, uh, most fun employees in the division.
I'm gonna make it my, my, my goal to come up with a name.
Perfect. I can't wait. I heard, I've heard you Peyton, the wizard never reveals his secrets. Okay? And then on the top here would be the final postcard that comes out 15 days in advance of the new collection. Again, it states their new service date. Uh, all of these pieces have a QR code directly to our Waste Wizard app. They can type in their specific address and get their schedule. They can also sign up for reminders via email, text, print a calendar, phone call, or they can download the mobile app that sends you a notification the night before.
Samantha, have, have y'all thought about, since it's a targeted area, door hangers or stickers actually on the garbage can? I mean, no mailing out, never, I hate to tell you, 90% of the people are not even gonna open it up. To them, it's like getting a bow pack in the mail. They just.
You don't open the bow pack?
No. Same ads all the time. So.
Yes.
You know, because it's a big change. I mean, I'm going from Monday to Thursday. That's a big change for me.
They did it, they did it just for that. I think I'm probably, am I moving?
It says my pickups on Monday.
How do you know that?
It's the Thursday. I'm reading the material. It's right here.
Oh, that's just an example.
Yeah, that's just, that's not, that's not directed.
Yeah, look at the maps.
You have Monday service.
No, we stole it. No, 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 no. You're making this personal. Misinformation.
Based on the maps, I really think there's only two council numbers.
But not everybody. If you look at the map.
But I mean, I guess that's my point is.
Right. We have worked very closely with our GIS team to make sure that the right residents get the right information. So we have separated our mailing list by service day. So the recycling people will get one letter, the, you know, Monday, from Friday to Monday garbage. Or if it's Tuesday to Thursday garbage, they will get their color-coded specific letter based on our GIS data. We also have cart tags. So part of this, yes, we anticipate people not knowing their new schedule. And the division is prepared to go back if a resident calls in. And we will have a bright orange cart tag that says, hey, here's where to find your new schedule. that says, hey, here's where to find your new schedule. So we are prepared for that.
All right, I just made it. I'm staying on Monday.
Is there anything attached that we can attach to my Cola SC for those who are registered?
I can throw a tennis ball at it.
Can they get some type of notification?
We can certainly...
I mean, that would require it's still to be targeted.
Right, and it would be required for the residents to sign up. So we also have our mobile app as well. So we are working with the vendor to make sure that the new schedule appears ten days in advance. So they'll have that notification, but I can also look into my Cola SC.
See who, you know, within the target areas, if there's a way for us to tell who's registered to my Cola SC, who's my Cola.
Yeah, I'm registered, but I don't know if you register your address. We'll look into it, absolutely.
Looks like they're heavy on a lot of businesses, too.
Yes.
In the downtown area, Robert Mills, Vista, all that.
Again, some of those businesses will be on private dumpster service. So our customers are within our banner system and we have an address. So we've compared our GIS with our banner customers to make sure that they're included in those letters.
But currently, don't we pick up multiple times a week in that downtown area, the Herbie Durbys?
Those areas are not affected. Our six-night service will...
It remains the same.
Our six-night service area will remain the same and they will not get a letter. Well, I'll knock on wood.
Like some of the apartments on Main and hotels on Main that have...
They will not be affected.
Okay, gotcha.
See, now you're ready to go on to the store area.
Ninety-nine percent residentially is serving.
Ninety-nine percent?
Ninety-nine percent. I'll leave that one percent for the Vista area and University area. So with the proposed start date of November tenth, we are looking at mailing the first letter next week. September twenty-second is next Monday. The second letter with our color-coded magnet would go out mid-October. And then the last postcard would go out at the end of October with the November tenth start date. Like I've already mentioned, we will be updating our mobile app with the new schedule and notifications. We will work with our GIS team to work on the city website and anything forward-facing for our residents. And lastly, although our routes were not drawn on any sort of council, district, or neighborhood line, these were drawn solely on efficiencies, be happy to attend any CCN meetings or neighborhood meetings to address residents.
It'd be interesting. I was thinking about this a little while ago. The two thousand empty lots we have in Columbia, it would be interesting to just see, you know, if those get developed, what days those kind of are on. So, because I feel like we're going to be in a really significant growth mode. And I'm not saying to change anything, you'd just be curious to me how many empty lots by day or by area, whatever.
I'm gonna hurry up for just a second. And I think we can look at that. I think some of our biggest issues are, and we can name them by subdivisions, our problem is Honey Tree. You know, Honey Tree is putting in eight to ten residents a week, you know, and they're just rolling them over. You get a Beezer Homes or an Essex Homes, they can stick-build the home and enroll these people in here. So it's really that corridor out, Percival Road, the corridor out, Leesburg Road, is really loading into homes.
Yeah, and Percival is gonna get...
It's only gonna get there.
Yeah, it's gonna finally get developed.
Yes. When there's a pot of woods, yes, they look for development. However, the way we've balanced these now, we do have room for growth and we do, you know, hopefully, maybe five years down the road, we may have to add a truck at some point.
Like in other words, okay, so if you say, hey, I'm doing X number of people, but we can do X plus Y without changing, you know, just stuff. Because I think part of the concept of going forward is just more modeling of, you know, what's gonna happen. And, you know, as I talked to Jeff about, like, economic development modeling, you know, I've thought about the concept that, you know, if you have two thousand houses, you know, for the most part, it doesn't change the way you manage. Managing two thousand houses isn't that much different than managing two thousand lots unless you're picking up trash.
And I think it's worth saying, I think Samantha covered it early on, is, you know, since nineteen ninety-one or so, we haven't added any routes to the City of Columbia services. So, you know, the solid waste division has absorbed a ton of routes. But if you look at it from a private contractor's point of view, or, you know, even the county's point of view, we use contractors, every home that's built in the county that they service is three hundred and fifty dollars that goes towards the solid waste division to offset those costs. We're trying to eat those costs in the City of Columbia and make sure we're still providing, and I'll say it again, the number one service in the city, and that's it.
I am done. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to take this now.
So when we get two thousand complaints on whatever the day is...
No, I think I dropped my something in the fountain outside.
But I mean, I'm just saying, though, I do think, I think what we should do is, we should also go on WIS, go on, you know, just talk to people and say, you know, it's not just that you, we want people to know they could be affected. And it's up to, there's enough ways to know you being affected or not. But I think if people know they could be affected, that's pretty good.
We will also be working with our customer care team to make sure that anybody calling into that thirty-three-hundred number, they understand, you know, what the changes are and how to find them. And then we will also be bringing in a fourth office staff member because we do expect an increase in phone calls. So we'll have another person there to address those as quickly as we can.
Okay, so one other thing that I was thinking about, so let's take Melrose Heights is gonna be affected. Melrose Heights is going...
Will be moving from a Monday to a Thursday.
Yeah, okay, which is right across the street from me. So they're all gonna be saying, oh, look who got his trash picked up, but I didn't get my trash picked up. So what I was thinking about, though, is in like areas, if we could have some signs to put out, you know, like almost like a...
Like a yard sign last summer.
Just put it on certain corners and say, yard service changes, you know, just stuff. The more customer service-type work and stuff...
And also, like, I know Coldwater probably can catch your phone numbers for addresses for customers. Do y'all have access to pinpoint that, or is that digging too deep into the robo-call, text world?
Yeah, that would be possible. There'd be a lot of data scrubbing just to make sure.
Signs might be more effective.
I think signs might. I mean, if you just look, if you look at the region around the Melrose Heights Heathwood area, if you just kind of stake them in the corners of that area, not necessarily in the middle, but just on the points, the four points on the outside, you know, and put some message on there that's at least informative without being...
Scary people. Tell your neighbors.
Yeah, spread the word.
Anyway, yeah. I really am. I'm right here. I'm gonna throw a tennis ball into the new area.
I mean, Councilman Brown, the wizard will take a walking partner.
Oh, yeah. The wizard's gonna have a new name by then.
Peter the Wizard.
The Wiz. The Wiz is gonna have a new name. Just trying to figure out, he looks more like Twirn.
Well, I appreciate everybody's time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Our next discussion topic is the normal time of the year where we bring back for you all fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six special revenue allocations. So most of the time, when we get to the budget and get it approved, there's things that we talked about during the budget process that we don't deal with right then. You know, we wait and kind of let everything sink in. And any of those kind of general funded, if there is any funds to be had, there may have been some community requests out there. So we try to look at all of those and bring back to you all what we think we can afford. And it's obviously for you all, the recommendations that we shared. And we wanted to give you this time to talk about those, look at them. So we kind of gave you everything in balance based on what we have available. And then it's also on your agenda this evening for your consideration. So this is the time during the work sessions to work through any questions, concerns that you have, as well as for the hospitality tax, funded external requests, additional external requests, but also this is when we bring you any eligible projects internally, which typically would be parks. So you have several park projects that we share. There's an additional list in there that we haven't funded yet, but just so they're on your radar. And Missy Hoffman, our Assistant City Manager for Strategic Initiatives and Innovation, will come forth to help walk through these. Or we can, I mean, you all had it to review, we can just go through it however you choose. The item additionally on your agenda this evening for consideration has to do with Finley Park. We are getting really, really close and it's looking amazing. We have a couple of items, obviously, that we want to make sure we have ready to go, ideally for the November fifteenth opening. And so those additional items through the contractor are on your agenda for consideration today via a change order. The funding for that item is reflected in the materials that you have in front of you, but the approval for that item would be on your consent agenda this evening or afternoon. So with that, we can, do you want us, Mr. Mayor, to just kind of start from the top and go through everything? Okay.
Because I know everybody's gonna have some questions, and I've got some questions on some of the funding as well.
Okay.
So I actually was gonna make a pitch first off, that the Budget Office has often needed the wizard costume as well.
Did you wish for that?
But then, or we could be a Scrooge, whichever one, depending on...
A wizard. Stick with the wizard.
Hey, and we can be Houdini and make that person disappear.
All right. So does that do, I think all accounts have the PowerPoint as well, right?
It sounds like they do now, yes.
Okay.
And so all these funds are coming from H-tax, or is this surplus?
We have two funding sources. One is from the state accommodations tax, five percent general purpose, which means it doesn't follow the same restrictions as the other state accommodations tax. And that is where, in the most recent years, City Council has made some allocations to projects that don't fit in other categories because, and then funding restrictions from the general fund. That is a combination of budgeted funds as well as use of fund balance. The hospitality tax funds is within your twenty-five, twenty-six budget. It's just what is unallocated as a reserve in the hospitality budget. And then a recommendation for reallocation of a current carryforward that we...
So what's the current carryforward?
The carryforward, the one project that's being carried forward, that's being recommended for reallocation, is this Silicon Compass Silicon South funding, the H-tax portion, which is two hundred and fifty thousand. But otherwise, the one point three million, there's one point three million dollars in the hospitality tax budget that's unallocated.
So I could request Phase Two of Melrose Park be put in for consideration?
Well, the funding that is before you today would completely wipe out all of those remaining funds. So you have to reallocate from what's been recommended before you today.
Now, does that dig into general fund carryfords in general from surplus from last year?
We have not allocated from general fund. We haven't determined if there's a general fund surplus at this time. They're still going through the audit.
Do you know what the snapshot of surplus over the past couple of years has been?
It is dwindling.
Does that mean that would be what it is this year, sir?
Yes.
But then there's also...
So you're starting at what?
Yes.
So there's a...
There'll be some future...
H-tax opportunities.
Opportunities as well.
When?
Um, well, maybe a month?
Hereabouts.
So we made some allocations last year that haven't been funded. Are those included in this as well?
They're carried forward in your budget in twenty-five, twenty-six. They're reflected as a carry...
If a project's not moving forward, then we could assign that, correct?
We've made recommendations for one of those, yes.
Yeah, for the one, there were two, and the one that's reflected in the memo for just as Missy stated, the Silicon South, just because we don't have, we've got, received any information about...
That would be two years. I mean, if you thought it was coming down the road, you could shift it out, but that opens up two years. That's a half a million dollars worth of funding.
Of H-tax?
Yeah.
Well, we only did the one year that would have been, I mean, we didn't make that assumption. We just said, well, it didn't happen this past year. So that would have been two fifty of H-tax and two fifty of what, TDF?
TDF.
So we're, we have, I mean, the two fifty of TDF, let's just go back into the TDF balance, but this two fifty...
This year?
We did not double it.
We accounted for it.
We did not double it up.
We did not.
We did not, no. So the only thing is...
We only did one year. We did one year, yes. I mean, if there's information that you all have more about it, we just don't, we didn't...
Well, I mean, to me, the two fifty's available because it didn't get utilized and it's not gonna be utilized at this point for last year as a carryover, so...
And we accounted for that.
Right.
In this one point three?
List of recommendations, so... The top portion represents those things that are state accommodations. The bottom half are those things that are making up what's available out of the H-tax budget. And then there's two other supplemental projects below, Willim Park and Finley Park Food Truck, that would be funded from the two fifty reallocation. Southeast Park is something separate that is best recommended for funding straight from the H-tax.
Just from my knowledge, why would we buy a food truck when we got people in the food truck business?
So John Katz, who's, you know, already programming Finley, has an opportunity to get a repurposed one that we would have. We're gonna do both. I mean, the way they're programming the park, the staff feels there's an opportunity for both because first, coming online, we're not, we don't have, you know, a standalone opportunity where someone's gonna be out there cooking. So we absolutely want to bring food trucks into the mix. And I can let Henry and Todd take it from there, but they've really thought very purposefully about how a branded food truck would be utilized and could be more under our control and then bringing in chefs and different things of that nature. Is that fair? In addition to a very active food truck scene, I mean, weekly, really.
Is there a difference in doing a food truck at Finley as opposed to food trucks that's currently operating?
We're probably gonna relocate to Finley because soon, the location for Food Truck Fridays is not gonna be available anyway where it's currently happening at Bull Street.
Do y'all see something else glaring on this Finley Park list?
I do. Starts with a P. Starts with a P. Why wouldn't that include it in the overall budget for Finley Park? Because I mean, it sounds like if it's an add-on, it's hopping a lot of other parks that are on the master list, needs list.
I think it's more of utilizing a space now that they've seen as the project has evolved. I'll let our experts who are out there every day...
Max maximizing the activation of the space. We found that on the corner of Gaston and Taylor, there's some open space and we want to maximize that. That's gonna help with activation of the park of that corner. Was the main reason why that was, that's gonna be there. You want to add anything?
Right. We always wanted it throughout the design. We thought it was long reach, especially at the beginning when we had to be the project a little bit. But we see that opportunity now, especially we got Ping Pong, got the landing, we're calling it, where we're activating that building and we can bring pickleball. It looks at the playground, so it's great if you're a family, you wanna come and watch your family at the playground, but also play pickleball. We're just trying to provide a little bit for everyone out there.
Right, but to my point, it's jumping other projects at other parks, basically. It's skipping over Melrose Parks, Phase Two.
And Pinehurst, Pinehurst Park as well.
So it's a timing thing, too, because of being able to activate the space at the time of opening and have the contractor who's already obviously working and get this done, that additional surplus H-tax funding in another four to six weeks, which, there's another list of parks, projects in there, which one of those items is pickleball courts throughout the system, as well as, I think, lighting and...
Where's, I mean, where's the other list?
It should be attachment. So we didn't... It should be an attachment, so we, we didn't call out Melrose, but we did call out, I don't think we did, I think we called out pickleball courts, lighting, and something else across the system. So the idea was, because this is sort of time is of the essence to get this done, while we can get it done with the contractor mobilized, we were going to bring those additional items back in another month or two.
I would request that we just take a look at T S Martin. What, what upgrades it is.
Well, mainly, uh, we had Pinehurst.
Uh, or Pinehurst?
Pinehurst.
Yeah. Pinehurst and just the, the, we need to finish Melrose.
So we, we do have, just for clarity, we do have similar, similar requests in our capital for Melrose as well as, as well as Pinehurst, those things are, are being submitted in capital, our, our C I P. So those things are in as well.
Those are, those things on surplus, right?
Yeah, Phase One as well as Phase Two, and Missy can, can speak a little more to that, but we do have those requests submitted as well.
With that.
Well, I think that, you know, the, the other thing we've, we've got to discuss, we've got to decide if we're, if we're, you know, there's been a lot of talk back and forth, if, if we want to move forward with Three Rivers. That's five hundred thousand dollars is sitting out there as well. So we've got to decide, do we want to move forward on that or not at this stage? It's like Silicon and everything else, I mean, we, we, it's, it's got to be decided by this council. And these are things that are floating out there, and we've got to decide, are we moving forward with that or not? Because all these projects y'all are talking about, been in those categories as well, and what's, you know, what, where do we want that investment to go?
Have, and I'm, I'm sorry, have we gotten any updates on Silicon?
Silicon, I mean, they're, they're not closing at this point, so that two fifty that the manager's talking about is available, and if they don't close next year, then another two fifty, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's kind of, if nothing changes, you know, they're not able to move that forward. I mean, they've done the mini version, obviously, on their own at this point, but.
So previous years of funding towards that have been wiped and put to others?
It's, well, we got the two fifties in here, they didn't allocate this year, it's because there was not, no, no follow-up occurrence, so they basically took the rollover. And then, you remember, we rolled over Three Rivers with looking at, do we want to get this done at Finley Park? But we, we haven't approved it or given it an award letter, so we got to decide, is that the priority of council? Because that's in this memo as well, of, we need to make a decision.
I think we did receive a letter about that project from the organizer, saying, requesting that it be carried over because they were moving forward with planning, but needed direction on, on it. So that, I mean, we need direction too, because with Finley coming online, we, you know, John is already booking, booking it and treating it as a venue. And for Three Rivers, and the organizer's here, maybe now's the time to ask the right questions so that we can all be clear on what's going on with it, you know? I think that there was the discussion about Finley, which my understanding is now that's the direction the organizer is going for Finley and securing ads. Again, I mean, we can't speak to any more details than that, and I don't think he can lock things down until, you know, y'all say with clarity which way you want to go. But as far as Finley, Finley can host Three Rivers. It's just we, John needs to know, the organizer needs to know, and that sort of thing, if that's the intention.
Are we, so where John Katz is programming concerts there now? Are they free to the public?
Yes, the organizer, so that, well, we were going to talk about that with you all as well. A new fee schedule though, for organized events in the park is coming forward for your approval prior to the opening of the park. So in October, we're trying to get this change order done, and then in October, we will be bringing forth the new fee schedule. And there's, there's several things that's embedded in that fee schedule.
Like that's the.
Absolutely, absolutely. For the, for the opening, um, because working with our Office of Special Events, Harold and others with John, they've been intentional, and there's an interest by organizers like Jam Room, I'm just going to go ahead and say it, I guess, it's, okay? Um, it will be, that will be the opening day at Finley for Saturday. So it's already, there's, be something else leading up to it the night before, but the day of, there's a full schedule, um, basically moving events, um, that want to do it, if they would have been at Main Street and sometimes not as conducive for what they're trying to do. Finley now has the multiple stages, the back of the house, all the things that will let that be a very, um, active spaces. I mean, could hold up to, John, as John was here, Todd or Henry can say, but we're talking, it can hold up, what was the maximum number he told me, forty-something thousand potentially? At the central, but he was saying maximize the whole part and the different stages, it's a pretty big number.
Nothing preventing Three Rivers or Silicon South from taking some steps later on and making a pitch for H tax funds next funding cycle, right? With, if we haven't heard it much motion from them, they can reapply, correct? Am I running wrong?
I mean, they have, well, I know Three Rivers applied this funding cycle just to add to what they were already trying to do with the funding, but that wasn't approved. But yes, sir, there's nothing stopping anyone ever from applying any additional cycle.
Well, specifically Silicon South right now. They, because they apply, we, we made a war for two fifty annually for years.
All, all subject to them being able to get the control, and that hasn't happened. So we're reallocating that funding at this point. So the question becomes, does council still want to move forward with Three Rivers with what we're doing now or not? Because A, the organizer needs to know that, that, you know, because Three Rivers isn't going to happen just with what we're doing. So there's a lot other stuff to be done, I mean, there's no doubt, I mean, you can't, you can't, five hundred thousand's not going to make the whole thing. So the question becomes, do we want that to happen? Or do you want to have that funding to use in there? And that's what this council's going to decide, because there hasn't been an award letter, but it, in, in my understanding is, is that, you know, do we want to hear about it? Is, is there real life to it, or do y'all not have the same comfort level of trying to do that type of event at this point? And that's, I think staff needs the direction as well, because it's hanging out there. And now they have all of this in front of us, and along with other things that, you know, y'all mentioned, at least two parks, if not three, while we've been sitting in here.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe one of the organizers is here, I would like to hear where things are standing. If it's appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, we got to make a decision, so, I mean, you can't make it if you don't have the information.
Rather than assuming. And Missy, there, the deferred list here that I'm looking at, Flavorn Golf Center, C T, C T C, there is funding for this if we move forward?
Yes, sir, and that's not a complete list of capital, of park projects. Those were the ones that were highlighted as hospitality tax eligible, they're deferred, there's not additional funding at this point. Everything that's recommend, all the funding that is available is what's on your.
When we come back in four to six weeks, there, we're going to look at H tax. Oh, yeah, I don't think he's asking if, I don't think you're asking, will it fund the four million?
Yeah, I didn't know if, if this says it was funded, or it's a short wish list.
Exactly.
Well, there'll be some, and yet as far as later.
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha, understood.
Hello, how's everybody?
Good, man.
This is Mr. Roy Bradley with Bradley Foundation, for the record.
So how can, uh, what do you need to know?
Well, Mr. Mayor, or I'm happy to, where are you thinking staying with Three Rivers right now?
Okay, so right now, um, since we were put on hold, uh, from the state fairgrounds, and I went upon the mayor's request, I said, let's do Finley. Um, we've now locked in April the fourth of twenty twenty-six. Um, we've already started, um, the advertising, we've already started, uh, getting together the videos to put out in the different markets, as well as we've also got contract with the OJs, uh, for the, um, the headline. And we're trying to, um, get in touch with Simply Red to come. Um, those will be our two headliners, and then, of course, we have some local bands, and I have some R and B groups from the nineties that I've already spoken with, that, um, are ready to roll. They're just waiting on me, um, to give them the okay. Um, as, uh, the manager said, that we, we kind of need to know exactly what we're doing, because moving forward, I would like to go and see the park, because a lot of the riders that we're getting are saying the stage has to be a certain dimension, the lighting has to be a certain way, and I don't know if that's going to suffice, um, in the park, but I would love to do the park, because I actually saw some pictures of it, and I think it's going to be absolutely beautiful. So I know that, um, again, we've already started things. Last year in the meeting that, um, the mayor, myself, and a few others were there, he stated that we would have, you know, money along the way, while we were waiting to the next date, um, to reimburse for things that I'd already done. So we're moving, we, we never stopped, I literally just put a pause in it when he said, let's do it at Finley, versus doing it at the state fairgrounds. So that's really where we are, we're, we're moving full, full-fledged ahead.
Uh, but let's, let's clarify a little bit about that, just so we're all the same page. We didn't have an artist or a contract at that point, so we weren't going to make that original date. The idea was to give you time to put stuff together. And I've heard you say you've got contracted, I guess my question is, how do you have a contract? Because all of those have deposits requirements and all of that. I don't know how you can market something when, I don't know that you've got a contract with the city to do the thing. So I guess, where are we right now in the true stage of what you're trying to do? So that we have a real picture, because we're going to have to make a decision.
As I stated, right now, we have the OJs that are locked in. Um, we had a conversation with them last week, I was on the phone with Mr. Levert, and they're at a tie, I guess, because he doesn't really want to perform with the other guys. He's, it's like, he wants to give the OJs some time, and then he wants his own moment by himself to do whatever he's doing, and I'm not sure, but as I said, we've locked in the OJs, I'm just working on Simply Red.
Do you have an agreement with them?
Yes, we have an agreement with them through Elise Murray, um, she's the booking agent. Um, now, right now, as I tried to state last year when we were doing the meeting, most times when you have contracts assigned, they need a deposit immediately. So that's why I sent you guys the letter earlier this, I don't know how many months ago it was, I sent all the council members and the mayor and everyone the letter that we needed the funds to be released, so we can go ahead on and send the deposits out. So that's really what we were waiting on. Um, again, we were just put on pause. So everything is just, it's just waiting, we're just waiting. But we're going full-fledged ahead with what we're doing.
Mr. Mayor, what's your total budget for production of the entire festival?
So right now, we're probably looking at about, maybe at about nine for everything. Because I'm trying, I, again, when we first came here, I didn't want to do the three-day situation, I wanted to do just a day. Um, when the mayor, myself, and the other, we all met here in this room, and I stated that we wanted, we didn't want to jump out in the hot frying pan, you know, like they used to do, like Virginia and Mr. Frey did before. We were just going to start out with a one-day event, like just music all day, from sunup to sundown, um, and just kind of see what happens, and then, of course, the following year, maybe we can hop back to a three-day event, or two-day. But we didn't want to, um, do the three-day, so, but I know if we went to a three-day, it would be much more than that.
Yeah, from the billboard, so nine million for day production?
No, nine hundred thou, no, not nine million.
Nine, I was like, that's a big festival.
No, 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 sir.
And so, um. And the request now is a five hundred thousand dollar allocation towards the total of nine hundred?
I think that it was six was the total.
Hundred thousand, maybe a, maybe a liquor rebank.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all in?
Yeah, that's, that's all in, because we've already, we've already allocated sponsorship, um.
Can you tell us about that?
So Veronica Satchel, she's allocated a sponsorship with Jim Hudson. Um, also, the young man that owns the dealership in Orangeburg, oh, God, I'm sorry, I can't think of his name. He's, um, sponsoring all the vehicles to move the artists back and forth. Um, excuse me, uh, and then also some private sponsors that I have myself, um, that are coming in, as well as myself, my foundation, so, yeah.
Do you have a goal for how much you're going to need to match with private dollars from the other sponsors?
Uh, not, mm, I don't think that we have a, a match amount, no.
I mean, but you do need sponsors to make it all happen.
Yes, 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 we need sponsors to make all of it happen.
What, what budget, what's the budget for that, or what do you?
You mean the outside sponsors outside of what we're allocated from the city?
Yes.
It would be three.
Three hundred.
I think, you got ticket sales though, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
But do you need three hundred thousand dollars of sponsorship?
So I think, I think that I, we never got a clear answer on what the security was going to cost. We never got a clear answer on what fencing is going to cost. When we were talking about the fairgrounds, none of these things were a part of that. Now that I'm going to the, to the Finley Park with it, now we got to get fencing up, we got to pay a lot of police officers, USC.
River is going to have fencing now, that's part of what they're at, if you're talking about around the entire park.
Yeah.
That, well, that's up for council's consideration.
Oh, I didn't know that, I wasn't privy to that.
The park will be fenced.
Okay, so that'd take away from that then, because we were trying to allocate money to put fencing up around the entire park, put, um, the other stage, because we wanted to put a stage up on top of, uh, what is that, Taylor and, uh, huge, no, excuse me, not at, up at the top, Taylor and Assembly, we wanted to put a stage up there, like, at the top of, at the light where the, um, post office is, and then the main stage would be inside the park. Because you can't have, you know, if you've got two stages going at the same time, you can't, both of them can't be inside of the park.
That, that's all be impacted by your tour.
Yes.
If we, if this was for, I don't think any of that's an issue, you just haven't seen the.
Yes.
You haven't been privy yet to the layout of the park and what, um.
Yeah, because I was including fencing, because I knew fencing was going to be several thousands of dollars.
Let me get back to Councilman Brennan, I clicked it, all right, so he, he said, what's the total budget? You said nine hundred thousand, so.
Yes.
Total budget, nine hundred thousand, or nine hundred thousand plus, 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 plus?
No, 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 not, no plus, plus, plus.
Security's included, nine hundred thousand.
Yes, sir, it is.
So the name from the city is.
Yes.
So you're saying, right, you got six hundred for the city?
Yes.
Three hundred.
From other sponsors.
Ticket sales is going to be that.
So the tickets will be forty dollars, um, for the, for the day. So we don't know just yet what we're going to make on tickets until the day gets there.
Then come up with something, just, I mean, what's, what would be, what would be successful, the number of tickets sold? What would, what would define success?
Maybe twenty, twenty thousand?
Okay.
How many people will the new park hold? Because I don't, I don't even know that. I knew what the fairground held, but how many, what is the, um.
That's what I was touching on earlier, and I, I should have asked John to be here for this discussion.
I mean, if you sold ten thousand tickets, that would be successful, in my mind.
Very successful, yeah.
Ten thousand?
Yeah.
It's a lot.
I know, so I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to back my way.
Ten thousand dollars worth of tickets, or ten thousand?
Ten thousand tickets would be, would be successful, right?
Nine thousand.
So, so if you had three, we got three events, event spaces, stages, where you can play stages at the park, and those three will give us about forty thousand in attendance out of those three spaces.
Man, I don't want to be digging, I really, because I'm trying to be positive, so.
No, 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 so I didn't know that.
So what I'm saying is.
That's, that's a lot, I had no idea that.
Forty thousand sounds like a lot of people.
It does, it is, that is a lot of, that's a, that's a lot of people. Because usually they would get that in a three-day cycle, they wouldn't get that at one time in the past.
That's why they're pushing on November fifteenth to have, what does John call it, uh, they're trying to test, they're trying to test it out early with Jam Room, to see with all of those stages going.
So under ten thousand, uh, right?
Still, I don't know what Jam Room would be on Main Street versus Jam Room in Finley, so I'm not sure.
I do have one other question too.
Yes, ma'am.
This is, this is a huge undertaking, what, what does the team or the, um, the group look like that's going to be pulling this off?
So Ms. Satchel has already contacted the groups, as the mayor requested at USC, to help run the gates, the ticket counting. Um, we've also contacted, I spoke personally to Dr. Artis at Benedict, her business classes are also going to come and help. I think they can get hours or something for it, um, which is another reason why.
Right now, in like planning part, who's?
Oh, it's, we have a, a big team, it's about twenty of us right now.
And so, that's what I'm saying, who are some of those, are they some of the older, older? Higher Three Rivers, not older?
So Harold is one, uh, Mr. Harold, um, what is his name, Reeves, Mr. Reeves, yes. Mr. Harold, what is his name, Reeves, Mr. Reeves, yes. Mr. Harold Reeves is one. And there was another young lady that called me. I can't tell you what her name is, that helped with the Three Rivers. And I've also been getting advice from Ms. Tina Saxton as well. She, you know, she was just kind of telling me, remembering their years at Three Rivers and what they did and how it went. But my team is very efficient. Keisha from Alpha Media, her and Nick, both of those personalities from Alpha Media. I've also spoke to Curtis Wilson to help. And everyone is willing to do anything that needs to be done to help me to get it, to pull it off, but I know it'll be a success. But I'm glad to know that the park holds for it. I didn't have no idea it holds that many people. So, I think a 10 to 20,000 ticket sales would be great, because I don't think they've ever had that many at one time on any given day at Three Rivers. I think that's maybe the amount that they would have over the three-day count, I think. It wouldn't be that many at one time, but.
My brain was just wrapping around three different areas and would be intended to have each area activated at the same time.
Yes. But that's, again, why we said we weren't going to jump out into that doing three days in that many areas. They asked me to do the smaller, this first time out the gate, and that's what I agreed to do.
One stage, all the?
Uh-uh, one stage down and one stage up. Not four stages and not three days of four stages, just one day of two stages.
And the placement of that may be off from what he's thinking, because he hasn't been in the part to really know what we're talking about when we're saying the three and what the, you know, what the capabilities are with the new Finley layout.
So, we're taking all these lists.
Let me ask you information.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ed.
No, I have questions.
Just a question of clarity.
Yes, sir.
I'll go back to the budget.
Okay.
You looked at the budget as being 900,000?
Yes, sir.
600,000, five to 600,000 dollars from the city participation.
Yes, sir.
That other, that other piece and that other parameter, system sponsors?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How readily available are the sponsors as it relates to financing this, this project?
The sponsors were just literally waiting on me. I've been, like I said, I've been waiting on this. I didn't know which way to go. As I stated last year, when we saw each other, the last meeting, when I was supposed to address the council that night, and I wasn't able to, I spoke to the mayor in the room, and I was told that I would be getting funding along the way while I'm preparing for the next year. And none of that, I've not done any of that as of yet, but I've been, I've just been moving and paying things out of my own pocket, because we had to pay someone, someone to make the commercials, we had to pay someone to make the logos for Three Rivers, to create the commercials. I've had to pay all of that out of pocket, and that's what I've done.
Boy, I just got to clarify for the public record. Nowhere did we say you were getting money along the way. The money would come when you could present us with stuff that could be reimbursed, those receipts if we move forward, but when you punted with this, you were supposed to come back to us. You know, nobody's seen a contract, this and that. I mean, there's a lot of money here that we're accountable for, right? That we have the stage. So, for us to move forward, we got to button this up. I mean, you've talked about, you know, all of these things, but there's nothing, there's, there's nothing here. You can send us a letter, but there's no backing to it. We need to know that there's a contract. What's the deposit? When's the second payment due? What are the requirements? Because we have to be accountable for that. It's not like we can just hand you a half a million dollars and then you come back to us. So, I mean, you know, the OJs, what's that contract? You know, what, you talked about advertising and that. Well, what is that? I don't know how you advertise something that we don't have a secured date or it's been done yet. So, I'm a little confused of where we are. If you can get us all this, then that's a whole different discussion, but I'm a little concerned, because I hear a lot of this was said, this is said, well, that's not exactly the way that conversation went. So, we need to clarify this stuff so that, that, you know, we've held this for a whole nother year, which we agreed to, and there's a lot to hear, but if this thing's going to happen in five months, where, where are we? And I'm not sure, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not seeing anything. And if I can't physically hold that up to the public, I got a problem.
Well, this is the structure, which, what we're trying to, what the mayor's saying is. You got to have, it's, it's.
I got you.
It sounds like a really good idea without the structure that it takes to get us to say yes. It doesn't have the click, 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 click. This is, this is what it's all, it's, it's just too much, it's too nebulous for me, because it doesn't have, what I would say, the organizational structure to make me say, I want to, I want to allocate 600,000 dollars of the people's money to it.
So, I think that, again, if we're, if we're going on clarity, the day that I sat in the city hall upstairs for an hour to address you guys, I had those things with me. When I went in the room and you guys left, I went in the room to address you and you were gone, because I wanted to come and speak to everybody about it. And mayor, I don't think that you realize that you did say to me that wait till next year and do it in Finley. I didn't want to do it in Finley Park. I wanted to do it at the fairgrounds. So, we didn't really agree to it. I was kind of pushed into that, that realm, which was fine. Now that I see it, it's a beautiful park, it's going to be a beautiful occasion. But you did say to me, "If you just wait till next year, we can give you dollars to help you along the way while you're planning for the next year." But.
That's not what I said.
Okay.
What I said was, we're holding this money, and then if you can show us, because all of this has to be reimbursed and has to show a, if you can show us the contract, we can get it. Until this day, today, we still haven't.
So, I had, I had, I gave you a contract for the last band for last year, well, it would have been this year's Three Rivers, but you pushed, you paused me. I had, I gave you a contract for the artist, yes.
Who was that? Because Chris Stapleton was not a contract.
No, it wasn't Chris Stapleton. It was not. I sent you emails and all. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, I just have a question. I hear the tentativeness, and because it's a whole lot of money.
Yes.
Would you be willing to work under someone or some entity or agency in implementing this project that may give council members more, what's the word? A little more confidence? And I think that's just the word, in execution, if another entity or group came in.
So, I think, at this point, I can give you the contracts if that's what you need.
I know, the question is.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm answering what you're saying. I don't feel comfortable really going under someone, because I don't know what agency would, I don't even know who you would suggest.
You're wrong.
I know, I know. I'm just saying, because we've already put so much effort and work into this. We've been doing this now since you guys awarded us the money. We've been moving, we've been traveling and putting things together and creating images and creating content to get ready when the button is pushed, to put it out in all the markets. We've been, we've steadily been moving, we've never stopped. So, when I was paused last year, I had to sit still, but we were still moving and still going, still networking, still strategizing, still organizing. So, if you need contracts, you can get the contracts, it's not an issue. But I only came up here today just to kind of see what was going, I didn't even, I wasn't even prepared to be up here speaking, to be honest with you. So, if you need, whatever you need from me to assure you that we got it together, I can have it for you if you give me a little time. It's not a problem.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, because, no, but you need to answer my question.
No, no. I don't know, I want to wait first. If I can give you what you need to feel secure, then I wouldn't have, I wouldn't want to do that.
If, I'm, I'm moving to the next phase.
Okay.
If, if you cannot, because I don't want us to come back, but if you cannot produce what is wanted, would you be willing to work under someone that members of council may have more confidence in? It's, what do they call it? Like, not like mentoring, but something like that?
It depends on who it is, Ms. Herbert. Yeah. It just depends on what group you're saying, because we had meetings before, and when the meetings started, people came in and tried to take over and change all of my ideas. The ideas that we had already formulated, they were trying to change them and turn it into something else that I didn't want it to be. Three Rivers was, is, has a special meaning to me. So, it's, it's not about just up here trying to make money, because I'd clearly, as, as we was told by several members of the committee, the Rivers never made money. They shouted that out every time we sat down, "It never made money. I hope you don't think you're going to get paid." Because I said that it wasn't about that for me. That's not what Three Rivers is for me. So, it just depends on what entity you're saying to advise or assist us. I don't have an issue, because I didn't have an issue in the beginning when the group came to assist, but it just turned into something else, not what I envisioned.
Being aware is to an opportunity with the way the park itself is being programmed. So, John, who is now in the room, because I guess he was hearing all the conversation, thank you for coming, John. You know, John is doing a little bit of that anyway, as far as working with organizers and, you know, the staff is even contracted with someone that helps plan some of the events. I don't know, maybe.
When Ms. Wilson can make a suggestion.
Some type of arrangement, too.
Could he work with John Katz to put a package together? Yes.
The thing that, the thing that's troubling me a little bit is that perhaps I was expecting more structure. And until I can clarify and get clarity on the structure issues, organizational issues, I would, I would be more inclined to at least positively think about Three Rivers. I love Three Rivers. I've been a part of Three Rivers. But we, right now, we need clarity and we need structure.
I can get you that.
And if I could sense that that's where we are going, I think my colleagues would feel sort of similar to that.
Yes, I can definitely get you the structure you need. There's, there's no problems, like, we have a structure.
That's good, all right. And I'm, we put that together in the next 10 days, because as you can tell, 600,000 dollars goes a long way for Parks and Rec and alternative projects. Now's the time for you to bring that stuff to us, the business plan, whatever you got.
Okay.
Put some structure to it. Sounds like you have it. We look forward to seeing it.
Can we add to that, just because I do think it's, it's critical, because is, is having John sit down with Roy?
Absolutely.
And, and, because this involves the park. He's already planning, he already knows the stage stuff, he did it for the Fireflies. Put it down and then come back to us with a, a true package that shows, you know, this is what we're budgeting, this is what we're targeting, this is what we have today, this is what we're going to need, because, I mean, you can make some of it up with ticket sales. I mean, I don't think it's going to get much, it's going to be smaller the first year, because you got to prove yourself. And, you know, depending on the artist is going to be the draws, but working through that and coming back to us with something in, in short word makes much more sense to me.
Totally agree. I was going to be honest with you, I was watching TV the other night and hadn't seen this movie in a long time, and I was by myself, so I had time to kill, I watched Field of Dreams.
Wow.
This is not, that's what we need to go past. If we build it, they will come.
That's right.
I'm not kidding. I'm serious. To, to saying, if we do this, it's going to be successful.
That's true.
Not that it could be successful.
It will be.
This is what it's going to look like, it's going to be successful. You ever seen Field of Dreams?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You know what I'm talking about.
That's right.
We ain't got no cornfield, so we got to, we got to.
We usually get that.
I know you do.
All right.
That's it?
Appreciate it.
All right.
Roy, John, John, Roy.
I think you'll be in the hallway.
And head down to Finley Park. Thank you, council.
Corn in Finley Park.
So, any other questions about the current recommendations? It is on your agenda this evening.
Well, I would not raise that, but I'm certainly in favor of whatever funds we avail ourselves. There's a touchy issue that I have that I think is resolved, and thank you for, thank you for that. We look forward to next year.
Hey, and I just want to confirm that we haven't gotten any updates from the incubator and the connections program. They haven't submitted anything recently.
We didn't put it on because of that reason. Well, you know, there was the larger discussion in EDI, because that allegation was made.
Yeah. I have one last question. How many pickleball courts do we get for 390,000 dollars?
So, yeah, I was going to.
It's a hundred grand a court, basically. So, I was thinking, I was thinking, all right, so, is pickleball, all right, so, look, I think. No, 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 I'm, I'm pro pickleball, so, so, but, 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 one, one of my long-term, okay, long-term, we want more people living downtown. Okay. Short-term, though, that's really not the case. So, Finley Park will have to be a destination park at least for the next few years, right? So, you're going to have to, you're going to have to say, "I'm going to go to, let's go to Finley Park." So, we're not going to, no, people aren't going to be walking to Finley Park. They're going to be driving to Finley Park, and it's going to be a destination, and there's going to be things to do and stuff to do. So, my only concern about pickleball is, does that fit into Finley Park 2025, or does that fit into Finley Park 2030?
I think it programs folks there during the weekdays, when we need, we need to program the park.
We need people, it needs to be activated every day.
Okay, so, so you guys feel like it's, pickleball's a destination?
Yes, for some.
Well, I mean, look, I went to the Columbia pickleball thing they did, my move with mayor, they got 1,800 members, and all they could talk about is there are not enough courts for play, that they're stacked up waiting. We just, we don't have enough, and the private entities, you know, are, the only one I know of is out in Lexington.
If we build it, they'll come.
Sure, we're going to put some corn in the back, so you can walk out, you can walk out of the corn. All right, so we feel like pickleball is a, is a return on investment for the park.
Yeah, okay, fine.
All right, so we're wanting to hear.
Who were you going to play pickleball for?
I, uh.
Okay. I digress.
I'm gonna tell Tracy Wright that she hasn't come into her things.
I played long enough to get on.
Tina did a photo op at pickleball.
I did.
Two athletes play that game.
I got too many injuries.
So wait six weeks.
All right. Y'all focus back on this. Any other questions on this?
Obviously, the request that we have.
Couple things we've got to do before four o'clock.
Understanding that the requests that we have exceed the funding, so what's recommended is based just on what's funded. I just wanna make sure the city council is okay with what has been recommended.
Where's the recommended list?
It's on there. It's included. It's at the column on the far left. So one column. I'm sorry, the far right, yes, thank you. So one column recommend is specific for what's eligible for hospitality tax, along with allocated with available funding. What's recom- what's requested that's eligible for the state, five percent accommodations. And then the far right, last column would be what's recommended for funding based on what fits.
What's available.
What's available.
So we could, if, if, if chosen, we could fund all of this. But there still isn't enough money for the recommendations.
Oh, sorry, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes. At the staff, what's, at the level staff is recommended, yes.
Start.
If you wanted to re, yes.
Yeah, maybe you wanted to move things around. This is the way we drive.
All right, let's go. Love it.
Okay, well, there'll be a motion tonight from, for approval.
I think this, I would sort of some, uh, low hanging. Those are things we just couldn't get done right now.
All right. Will Fright.
Yeah, Will didn't do his job.
Supposed to do his job, and then leave.
I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session for receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege. Uh, pursuant to section thirty-four seventy-eight-two, short-term rentals. Discussion of negotiations, incident to propose contractual arrangements pursuant to section, uh, SC Code thirty-four seventy-eight-two, Project Dream. Along with discussion of the employment of an employee pursuant to thirty-four seventy-eight-one, municipal court judges. I got a second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam clerk, can you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. McDowell?
Yes. Aye.